TV.
Just made it a one-minute warning.
Good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for all those who have passed away in our community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Gahn?
Here.
Mr. Roper?
Here. The purpose of today's meeting is to conduct interviews for the vacant city council seat that was vacated when Councilman Evans was appointed to become Mayor Evans. So we're going to follow the same process we followed when we filled the vacant mayoral position. We're going to have interviews, a few questions, and then council will take a recess, an executive session to debate the merits of the candidates, and hopefully have a decision today. Mr. Walsh, before we begin, one quick question, same startup question as when we had the mayoral appointments. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton? The floor is yours.
Excuse me?
The floor is yours.
Okay. My name is Jay Walsh, resident of Scranton. I'd like to lead off with the Lord's Prayer. Our Father who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, give us those that trespass against us and leads not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Amen. Now, I'm going to speak on the fact that I'm still into a forensic audit for the city, as also for the county, the state, and the federal governments. That's not the concrete. That's my work outside of a city hall. I'd like to touch on collective capitalism, which floats all boats. It's a concept that was developed after World War II with the Japanese and later written about by an economist in 1962. Collective capitalism floats all boats. I'd like to say a word on the diocese of Scranton clergy situation. It's reportedly now that there's 1,800 people who have called the hotline to complain. Having been a sexual victim myself at the age of eight by my little league baseball coach, and didn't come to terms with it until the Sandusky situation, never told my wives, never told anybody. Referendum voting. I believe in referendum voting because I'd rather deal with issues than politicians. I'm not a politician, I'm a facilitator. And I'm open for your questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for putting your letter of interest. And why do you want to be a city councilperson?
Because I think I can bring about change.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Walsh, for applying. How would you define the governmental function of city council? In other words, what is the purpose of having a city council?
I think the current city council is dysfunctional, okay? I believe that there should be facilitators instead of dealing with issues rather than personalities.
Thank you.
Mr. Gahn, any questions?
Sure. What would you like to try to accomplish in four and a half months on council?
My main goal would be to get the city books under control and make people aware of the idea of referendum voting.
Thank you very much. This will conclude the interview. We'll bring in the next candidate.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. If you could state your name for the record, and we have one quick question before we begin, it's just, are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
Yes, I am.
The floor is yours.
My name is Richard Pika. I want to, good afternoon, council and city residents. I first want to take this opportunity to thank you for this invaluable experience to interview for the vacant councilman position. As I stated earlier, my name is Rick Pika. I want to take this opportunity to tell you about myself and my qualifications and experience and my love for the city of Scranton, which would all be an asset to city council. I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised in the city of Scranton. Attended public schools. My parents and grandparents are also lifelong residents of the city. My family is deep and rich in family history of public service in Scranton, where my father was a fireman, fire chief, and my uncle was a police officer. These family ties to Scranton made growing up in the city a wonderful experience. Knowing the city, the families of the firemen, the police, city employees, and city officials. All these experiences are what brought me back to Scranton, where my wife and I currently raise our family. My wife is from upstate New York, and she now calls Scranton her home. Upon my return from the military, I was employed by Geisinger Health System. I worked for Geisinger for 20 years as a technician, a manager, and a director of clinical engineering. I gained years of experience in management, finance, procurement. I was responsible for over 50 employees, budgets, project management, large expansions, and procurement of medical equipment and contract management. I also, during that timeframe, worked with my father and his family-owned garage door business. In 2010, I left Geisinger to take over my family garage door business based in Scranton. I serve Scranton in the Northeast PA. I am also on the board of directors for the Northeast PA Youth Shelter here in Scranton, where we provide quality emergency shelter and related services to unaccompanied youths ages 14 through high school graduation. These experiences of being a lifelong resident, family history, working in the city, a homeowner, a small business owner, and being involved in community give me invaluable knowledge, experience, and the good and the bad of the great city of Scranton. That's why I am here before you today, so I can keep our great city moving forward and work with the Mayor Evans and the city council to address this current city business and issues to bridge the gap until our new city council starts in January. Thank you.
Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Pika, both for your letter of interest and your service to the country. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So you did talk a little bit about why you wanted to be a city councilman. How will you apply your private sector skills to your council seat when you get appointed?
Well, my experience in the business sector, being familiar with the mercantile tax and garbage fees, that will be valuable knowledge to help work the city through the issues that we currently have, trying to attract businesses. I'm not a big fan of the mercantile tax.
No one is.
The Scranton prep tax that I think we're looking at, or the payroll prep tax, I believe they use that in Pittsburgh as well, from what I read. And I haven't contacted anybody in Pittsburgh to see how well it's working and if it's a good fit for the business people there, but that would be a start where I would begin to see if that would be a better option than the mercantile tax.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes. Thank you for your interest. How would you define the governmental function of city council? In other words, what is the purpose of having a city council?
Well, my understanding, we're the legislative branch of the city. And my view is the role of the city council is to work with the mayor and work with all the department heads and try to uniformly make our city better. It's in a very important role.
Thank you. In your opinion, what is the biggest challenge facing city government, and what could you bring to council to help us address that challenge?
The high taxes in Scranton and Lackawanna County, I think, are one of our biggest challenges. I mean, we have, we can make a laundry list of challenges here in the city. But I would say taxes, so we can attract new business and new people, young people, into the city, so we have a bigger tax base and a bigger business base to help bring people into the city.
Thank you.
Mr. Gahn, any questions?
Yes. What specific ideas do you have that would improve city operations?
Could you repeat that, Mr. Gahn?
Yeah, sorry. What specific ideas do you have that would improve city operations?
City operations. Well, I'd work with all the department heads first, go talk to them, and see if there's any way we, as council, help streamline the operation, look at their budgets, and see if there's any way we could streamline budgets. I also am a big fan of what Pittsburgh has, is they call it an institution and service privilege tax, where they tax the non-for-profit businesses, foundations, that provide service or other related services to the city, to help bring some more revenue into the city, to relieve some of that tax burden.
Thank you very much. This will conclude the interview, and we're going to bring in the next candidate, and we're hoping to make a decision today.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. One quick question before you begin. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
Yes, I am.
The floor is yours.
My name is Joan Hoda-Wanitz. I've been attending city council meetings for five and a half years, but my frustration meter maxed out long ago. I'm so tired of standing at this podium, asking for information, and getting little or no feedback. I'm fed up with the parade of taxpayers, who contact city hall for help with their problems and get only lip service, or worse yet, are totally ignored. I realize that many problems can't be solved in the near term, and some can't be solved at all without legislative action. Nevertheless, residents deserve a prompt response from city officials and a full explanation of what can or cannot be done to resolve their problems and why. I understand that you, as council members, can only pass on information the administration provides to you, and I am confident Mayor Evans will direct city employees to answer our requests for information in a prompt, courteous, and uncensored manner. We should not have to rely on right-to-know requests for the most basic information about our city's financial status or its internal operations. If I am appointed to city council, I will work with you, the mayor, his department heads, and other city employees to get answers to questions, find solutions to problems, and reduce the risk of fraud, waste, and abuse in local government. If city councils' requests for information or taxpayer assistance are stonewalled or ignored, I will have no problem confronting the responsible employee, including the mayor. After all, what can they do to me? Bend my dog tags and send me to Baghdad? Jerry Cross hit the nail on the head when he said I had no business coming to this podium to complain if I wasn't willing to recommend my own solutions and take my fair share of public criticism. Finally, I believe that five months on council will give me at least some insight into how things really work in this building. And if the way we do things cannot stand public scrutiny, we must change the system so that it better serves the needs of the people. So win or lose, I will be here in the peanut gallery on January 6th, and I will use whatever I learn in the next five months to make Scranton, as Mayor Evans would say, just a little bit better. And with that, I'll take your questions.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes. Well, Joan, thank you very much. I was very happy to see that you put your letter of interest in. Puts a big smile on my face to see you do that. I would love to see your name on a ballot someday. No one comes to this council every week in, week out, without the passion and tenacity as you do, and that's from the heart. I really mean that.
Thank you.
Now, when you get your appointment for a couple months until the end of December, what skills do you have that you're going to bring to council that's going to help you be an effective councilperson?
Well, for one thing, my education will help me with things like budgets and audits. I have a bachelor's in accounting, and I have an MBA, and I can even do research. Excuse me. I have a master's in library science. I have seven published articles on fraud. I love fraud. It just turns me on, but I don't like fraud in my city. So I do have a certain number of skills. I know how to read an audit. I know how an audit should be done, and I know when the auditors are not meeting the task, when they're missing red flags, and the auditors need to be challenged.
Thank you. Again, thank you, Joan, for putting your letter of interest in. I'm pulling for you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes. Thank you for your interest. How would you define the governmental function of city council? In other words, what's the purpose of having a city council?
Well, city council, according to the Home Room Charter, is the legislative body, and it takes the proposed legislation. You could also do your own legislation, you know, to help run the city. You have to work in concert with the executive branch, which is the mayor. You are the ones that will finally approve the budget. You're the one that received the audit. In addition, mayor also is an addressee on those things. But you should be working with the department heads to, number one, make sure we have the right legislation, that our ordinances are not out of date, that new ordinances are enacted as required. You should be making sure, when you look at the budget, not only the revenues and expenses that you're going to approve, but that we have the right people in the right positions, and they have to have the right qualifications. You look at the 2020 budget. One of the things I would strongly encourage you to adopt and consider is a new hire, and that is a certified internal auditor, because the public watchdogs, the independent auditor, the state auditor general, and the controller's office missed all the red flags on the double pensions and what Mr. Courtwright was doing for five years. So you have a larger role than just legislation. You should be aggressively working with the mayor and his department heads, making sure the appropriate legislation's being drafted, old ordinances are being changed, and then you have to look very closely at the budget. And that's a hard call, because you're going to have to cut some things that are nice to have, to start beefing up the things that are essential.
Thank you. In your opinion, what's the biggest challenge facing city government, and what could you bring to council to help us address that challenge?
Do you want me to do that in alphabetical order?
I said the biggest.
A lot of people have talked about taxes and how unfair they are with delinquencies not being collected. A lot of people have talked about the city's image of being a corrupt government pay-to-play. But I'm going to introduce two other issues I think you need to look at that don't get as much attention. One is the deteriorating infrastructure of the city. And that includes, under that rubric, stormwater sewer management, okay? We're just getting, no pun intended, we're just getting our toes wet on the issue of stormwater. But look at all the buildings and the real estate and the vehicles that the city owns and needs to maintain. When are we going to see a long-term maintenance plan so we don't have to look at a $10.7 million bill to renovate city hall, just to make it workable? Okay? I know it's not sexy in a budget to plug in numbers for long-term maintenance, which can kick the can down the road so far. How many times in the last 20 years have we had to do emergency repairs to firehouses? Okay? You know, vehicles that DPW needs, vehicles that our fire department needs. You've got to bite the bullet. It may not be very sexy, but you've got to dedicate money to that. We need a capital budget that's very serious and that's posted on the website. The other thing that is not talked about and runs shivers up and down my spine is the ongoing litigation against the city. And what I mean is, I want a Plan B. In the event, unlikely it may be, but in the event we lose something like the Act 511 lawsuit, or the sale of the sewer authority lawsuit, what's our Plan B? If the courts tell us that we're going to get hit up for a lot of money? You realize that Act 511 taxes account for 42% of the revenue in this year's budget? 42%. So, you know, we're putting a lot of faith in winning those lawsuits. You look at the 2017 audit. Management, which means the mayor and his staff, is supposed to discuss litigation. Read the paragraph. It's less than 100 words. It basically says, yeah, we're going to cover that in our financial statements. No Plan B. You do that in the corporate world. You know, the auditor's going to give you a going concern finding, meaning, basically, you're probably going to be out of business next year, or when those lawsuits come due. So I think those two challenges, the infrastructure, you know, stormwater management, which we've not been pushing too hard, and maintenance of all of our property, and litigation, you've got to have a Plan B. You don't want to make that decision in a rush should something happen.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any questions?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Hoda-Wanitz. What specific ideas do you have that would improve city operations?
Well, one would be bring in a certified internal auditor. I would place that individual in the BA's office, because the BA is responsible for monitoring and directing operations and the budgets of all the other departments. An external auditor, the one who does our annual independent audit, he does not look at the city's internal controls to evaluate them as to their effectiveness. He only looks at internal controls as they impact directly on the financial statements. You've got to have an internal auditor. And by the way, when I say you put the name Certified Internal Auditor, you get a Certified Internal Auditor. You don't stick a body in there, give them the job title, and say, let it be written, let it be done. It's got to be a qualified person. It's going to cost money. On the other hand, you could finally discharge Rainey and Rainey, because he could teach the BA staff how to prepare for an audit. You don't need to contract that out anymore. That's one thing that I would do. I think you're going to have to look at the entire personnel listing and the budget to make sure, like I said, that you have the right person with the right qualifications. And if we need a new hire, suck it up and hire them. But we, you know, you may have to eliminate some nice-to-do functions. You're going to have to prioritize essential services. That's one thing. And more automation, you can never have enough of that. That's the way to go in the future. That'll save you a lot of personnel costs. And work closely with all the local universities and schools and get their interns down here. That is free, hidden, brilliant manpower. And a lot of them are local residents, and maybe we can get them to stay in Scranton.
Thank you very much.
No questions, just one comment, though. Really appreciate you applying, and it's very refreshing to hear all your ideas, and there's no question that you know the issues so far better than anyone else that's been in front of us from being here so often, but it is very refreshing to spend a little more time than we do on our weekly meetings.
Yeah, I got more than my five minutes.
You did get more than your five minutes. So, thank you very much, and we're going to call in the next applicant, and we hope to have a decision today.
I'll stick to my head and tell them, oh, you got him?
Thank you.
Before you begin, just one quick question that we're asking every applicant. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
I am.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having me today. I apologize, I'm coming off a three-day bout of laryngitis, but I'm pretty sure I can get through today. But if there's any scratching of my voice, my apologies. Let me introduce myself. My name is Attorney Mary Walsh Dempsey. I've been an attorney in this city for the last 28 years, and a few things have led me to this decision here today, and you may be surprised to hear what the first one is. It's actually you four. And I mean that with the utmost of sincerity. When I, because I'm not a political creature by nature, and when I saw that you four put aside the ideological philosophy that are historically associated with political parties, whether it be Democrat or Republican, and four Democrats voted to appoint a Republican mayor, I was overwhelmed. Thank you. I really was, because for the first time in a long time, I thought the residents of this city are being protected. And I was invigorated, and I was revitalized, and I was excited. That's number one. Mayor Evans, I don't know if he's here today, I don't see him, but to him as well, he put aside what could have been his individual time to run for a two-year seat, and he said, I'm going to take this five-month term because it's what's best for the city. The second thing that brought me here is I was involved recently in a legal dispute that was on public access TV. Two things I learned. Number one, I didn't know that many people watched public access TV, but they do. And the second thing I learned is people appreciated my voice. They appreciated the passion that was associated with it, and they appreciated what was said. And while this voice has historically been reserved for private legal disputes for a long time, I thought, you know what? Maybe this voice has a place in the public. Maybe I can represent people. Maybe I can articulately say what needs to be said on behalf of the residents of the city of Scranton. So those are two of the reasons that brought me here today. A little bit about myself, as I said, I've been practicing law for 28 years in the city. It's not just I have a law degree. I practice law every day of my life, sometimes more than I want, to be candid with you. I've been in every courtroom, I've been in front of every judge. I say that so that you know I'm a businesswoman. I've been involved... I've been involved with two law firms only in my 28 years of practicing. One was O'Malley &amp; Langen, where for 20 years I was a managing partner. I oversaw three offices, I oversaw the budget, I oversaw our employees. I understood what challenges were facing downtown Scranton at that time. Parking, a lot of the blight issues that are now being solved. Quite frankly, I think there's a homeless issue in downtown Scranton that I happen to see every day because I have a large window facing my office. The mercantile tax, the trying to get and retain good employees in the city. I saw firsthand the challenges that we faced. The last eight years, I actually kind of switched sides. At O'Malley &amp; Langen, I represented individuals. They came to me and I assisted them in every way I can. I will bet I represented thousands of residents of the city of this Scranton. In the last eight years, I switched and I'm now representing businesses. Many businesses in the city of Scranton who remain unnamed due to confidentiality. But again, I speak with their CEOs, their COOs, their CIOs, their vice president of HR. I understand the challenges that are facing them. They tell me what's wrong and I have to fix it. A lot of things I can fix and a lot of things are a creature of the city that we just need to fix on our own. So I understand. And while a lot of people may come in here to you today and say, this is one of the most dire and calamitous times in our city's history, I'm going to tell you something, I look at it differently. We have nowhere to go but up, and I mean that honestly. And I, for one, am willing to work as hard as I can for as long as I have to, which is five months, to make that happen with you four if I'm appointed. We have to build, we have to create honest, open relationships, we have to maintain integrity. One of my favorite things, and I have my binder, I've been studying up on the Home Rule Charter and the Ethics Act and many other things, the exit plan for Act 47. One thing you'll find about me is I don't do anything halfway. You know, my kids think I'm working on some big case because they see me studying these binders every night. I've been working for this. If I don't get it, at least I learned something new. But if I get it, I want to hit the ground running. You're not going to have to teach me a lot. Now, am I going to know everything? Absolutely not. I'm going to need to learn from you four, but I'm going to listen to you four because you've got the experience over me. I'm also going to maintain my own independent and objective judgment, which, if you look at the Ethics Act or the exact words, that's listed there. I think that's super important for any of us. A couple other quick things that may be important for you to know about me. I'm the incoming president of the Lackawanna Bar Association. I only say that for two reasons. Number one, I understand what it's like to be in a fiduciary role. I've sat on that board for four to five years. I've represented the lawyers of Lackawanna County in that role. Oh, boy, I didn't get through half of what I wanted to say. Let me just finish my thought and I'll complete. But I was elected by my peers. And to me, I was humbled and I was honored. Am I bound by that? I have other things I wanted to say, but I will be bound by it if need be.
You can have another minute.
A few more minutes?
We're going to have questions from council members as well, so.
And maybe some of that I can cover. I just want you to know that I've done my best to stay aware of issues, not just for coming in here today, but over the course of my career. I follow Joshua Mast and his Scranton Tomorrow team. I follow Bob Durkin and his Chamber of Commerce. I'm familiar with the lawsuits that are facing the city with the garbage fee and the taxation fee by Attorney John McGovern. I know that we've got the city delinquencies. I know that by the end of this year, to come out of Act 47, we've got to make a change from the business mercantile tax to the payroll tax. I also know that we have to look into putting a debt policy into place. I understand what needs to be done in the next five months. This is not just someone who's showing up and saying, I want to fill a seat for five months. Mayor Evans said, I want to get a lot of work done. I feel the same way. And I'm willing to do it and I'm willing to work hard and I'm willing to work with you and for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yeah, well, Attorney Dempsey, thank you for your letter of interest and coming up and stepping up to the plate. That means a lot to us, I know. Now, one of the things I learned fairly quickly on this seat was how different the public job is than the private sector. So how do you intend to apply the skills that you've learned privately to this more of a public-type atmosphere in government?
Understood. I think one of the main issues I will face in making that transition is time. In the private sector, I can kind of control how I solve a problem, whereas I understand the public sector, things may take more time. But to answer your question more directly, I think I bring two very important things to the table, and they are my critical and analytical thinking skills. I've been solving complex problems for 28 years, and I've been doing it for some big companies in this area. And they are problems and they are disputes that have lasted over a period of months and a period of years. And I have the ability to look at a problem, and I'm not going to say I can solve it immediately, but I can come to a thinking or a thought process or I can decide who or where we need to reach out to. I also have the ability to listen to other people. Like I said, I'm diplomatic. I don't want you to think I'm going to come in here and say this, 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 and this. I listen and I respect and I dialogue with others so we can come to a solution that's in the best interest of the city.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes. Attorney Dempsey, thank you for applying. I followed the zoning hearing and you should be commended for your preparation in that. And it was one of those rare instances where even though you argued back and forth for up to 10 hours, at the end of the day, you came together and you made consensus. So my first question is, how would you define the governmental function of city council? In other words, what is the purpose of having a city council?
Twofold, I would think, maybe more so. I mean, I've read a lot of things and I started to realize everything that's involved in it, and I certainly realize what an enormous undertaking it is. But I think the way the council is set up, it should be a checks and balances with the mayor, obviously, we've learned that the hard way, and with his administration to make sure everything is going okay. I also think it's a proactive role to listen to our neighborhood leaders, to listen to our residents. You know, I watched that July 31st meeting with the Pennsylvania Economy League and DECD, and what a great roadmap they set out for us. So part of our role is to listen. Listen to others who have the expertise, listen to others who can tell us what to do, where to go, and how to do it. And also to have foresight. You know, some of these healthcare benefits, they're calling them legacy benefits, which I'm quite familiar with from my job. These are decisions that were made years ago that are adversely impacting us now. So I also think a council has to have foresight to know how their decisions are not only going to affect the present day, but the future.
Thank you. In your opinion, what is the biggest challenge facing city government and what could you bring to council to help us address that challenge?
Well, honestly, right now in the position we find ourselves in, I think it's a lack of integrity. There's obviously other challenges. I think exiting Act 47, although a roadmap has been set out for us, has to be done, you know, relatively quickly. I think those lawsuits are important. I'd like to get on top of those garbage delinquencies. That makes me angry that certain people pay and certain people don't pay, and certain people get deals and certain people don't get deals, and then their garbage is still picked up. And I'm a regular citizen just like everyone else, so if I think like that, there's no reason other people shouldn't think like that. But getting back to the integrity point, I very, I have difficulty, I'm modest and I'm humble, patting myself on the back. But I think the one thing you will hear if you talk to anyone about me is my honesty and my integrity, and I have treated everyone with that during the course of my career and in respect and response. I expect that from other people as well. So I think those are a few things that face us immediately and, again, maybe in the course of the next five months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Yes, thank you. What specific ideas do you have that might help improve city operations over the next five months?
That's a good question, because I actually thought about this a lot. And I'm not sure in a five-month period, there's so much that needs to be done. I don't know how much proactive work is going to get done in the next five months because I think we have to respond to so much that needs to be done that's already created for me. But, you know, ideas, a couple things. In terms of our neighborhoods, I feel like our neighborhoods are the core of our being in this city. And it was funny, Dan Semrell was quoted today, he called us lifers. I consider myself a lifer. People who like love Scranton and no matter how bad it gets, we're not leaving. And a lot of people in our neighborhoods are lifers. But there are grassroots organizations, there are people on the street. You want to know anything in Greenwich, you can come out and ask us and we know because we see the strange cars going in and out of alleys. So I would like to start some sort of, and again, this is very premature, and no, I haven't thought about funding or anything like that, whether it be a neighborhood liaison or someone to meet with our neighborhoods, monthly maybe, optimistic, maybe bimonthly, six times a year. I'd like to hear what they have to say to us. And good neighborhoods create good schools, and good schools create good neighborhoods. They feed off of each other. So that's kind of one of the ideas I have. I think I can bring a lot to the table to you in terms of managing some of these lawsuits. I'm not going to say I'm going to come in and solve them all or settle them all, but I really do think I can give you some good guidance. I understand the workers' comp system, which for years has been in disarray in the city of Scranton, and I know that. And I know our reserves and there's issues with that and PMA. So, again, I think my goal during five months is to respond to a lot of what's already on the table, and I think I had a list of eight things which I didn't get to. But if I could do something proactively during that time, those are a few things that come to mind. Thank you.
Well, this will conclude our interview. We appreciate you coming in. We're going to have four more candidates come through and then we're hoping to make a decision today.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Before you begin, just one question. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
I am.
And the floor is yours.
Pardon?
The floor is yours.
Oh, okay. I'll keep it short. The reason I'm here is because I do have some issues and ideas that cannot be presented from this podium within the five minutes that's allotted to the speakers. And so I thought this was an opportunity. It's, I've made a lot of complaints, I've made a lot of suggestions, not always a lot of feedback, and I thought maybe things would be different if I looked at it from the other side of the podium, which is the reason I'm here.
Mr. Perry?
Yes, Ms. Schumacher, thank you for putting your letter of interest in. Just like Ms. Hoda-Wanis, I was happy to see your name on the sheet and to see you appear interested in. Your passion is second to none. You come well-prepared every meeting and you do come with some very good questions and sometimes we can't get the answers for you timely. And I think this is a very good place for you to be right now. So thank you for coming. So I know why you want to be a councilperson. So one of the things that I had realized pretty quickly was that my skills that I learned in my private sector didn't naturally translate into the public sector. What skills do you have that you grew up with and that you learned, and how will you be able to apply them into your councilperson position?
Well, as you know from my resume, I worked for a defense contractor and I was a leadership position at one of the associations, Electronics Industries Association, where we did a 10-year budget every year that forecasted the expenses on each government, each Department of Defense and NASA project, as well as, we went to Department of Energy as well. And we, in that process, we took what was already published, of course, and then we went out and the association set up interviews for us and we went out and interviewed the people that we needed to talk to to form our opinions. So I am familiar with government from both sides. I did congressional stuff and, again, the budgeting certainly. And my official title for a long time was research. And I think you're familiar with the fact that I'm very curious naturally and I just see something and the light goes ding and I go after it until I find the answer. So I think all of those things would be helpful here and I do, again, see where there's a problem and where there's been successes. I mean, one of the things I'd be happy to share, which is I don't think this body or the school board interfaces enough with our elected officials. I mean, I need to be, all need to be lobbyists and go to those people. There's a lot that they can do for this body and they should be doing. And I don't think they're called upon often enough or held accountable when they don't do anything for us. So, you know, that's just one of the things that I think would translate.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, thank you for applying. How would you define the governmental function of city council? In other words, what's the purpose of having a city council?
Is to balance the administrative body. You don't want a dictator, which could probably happen if you didn't have a council to, that they had to go through the wickets of you people. And also, you're able to bring things to the administration's attention that you don't have, that they haven't addressed. So I think, and represent the people. There are, you know, four of you, soon to be five, that four of you have been elected by the public to represent them here. It's important.
Thank you. In your opinion, what is the biggest challenge facing city government and what could you bring to council to help us address that challenge?
I think the revenues, increasing the revenues or cutting the costs or both, one of the, you know, any of those things need to be done. And, again, researching what others have done, advocating for what we would like the state to do for us and in some cases, the federal government. And I think those things could all be very effective. And I have other ideas on what we could do to either increase the revenue or decrease costs.
Thank you.
Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Yes, thank you. What specific ideas do you have that would improve city operations?
Probably a reorganization and looking at doing some analytics on functionality of each of the departments and where they could be combined and where they might be bid out even. So that would be one of the things. And again, lobbying.
That will conclude our interview. We appreciate you coming in. We're going to call, we have a few more candidates, and then we're hoping to make a decision today.
You are?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. One question before we turn it over to you. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
Yes, I am.
The floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Kathleen Madson. I am a resident of South Scranton. I graduated from Dunmore High School and I also graduated with a bachelor's degree in psychology from the University of Scranton. I'm not sure what you need to know from me, from my introduction here, but I did start my first real job, which was in November of '88 at the Educational Opportunity Center, which is a nonprofit federally funded grant program. Sorry about that. And that was to help people seek further education, whether it be getting a GED, getting a certificate, getting a bachelor's degree, whatever. And in my position, I assisted adults who wanted to go back to school. My position afforded me a lot of experiences that other jobs have not. I partnered and traveled to local job centers, they were the career links of today, in Scranton, Honesdale, Milford, Montrose, Susquehanna, and even Stroudsburg. So my territory was pretty big. I also went into the Lackawanna County Prison and worked with women who were soon to be released by getting them some footing as to what their next career step would be. I worked with GED programs at Marywood. I was also part of a I was responsible for the inventory ordering. And I also had to adhere to LCB codes and different laws. And obviously, we need to make sure there was good customer service provided. I scheduled entertainment there, organized bar events, and we even worked with community events like Party in the Park, which used to be up at the Everheart. We were one of the owners to provide the food up there for the folks that attended that. In order to open the business, we worked closely with the Chamber of Commerce, other supporting groups that gave us funding packages together. So, it really reinforced knowing how to kind of open a business in Scranton. In 2005, my husband started a job with MetLife. I sold the Banshee probably around 2004, 2005. So, once we sold that, he went and worked with MetLife and I was his office manager. He was a captive agent with them. So, I was responsible there for basically running the office, organizing the files, doing customer service, supply ordering, and all the typical things you need to do every day to keep your business running. That job fortunately allowed me to have some free time. I wasn't a full-time employee there. So, during that time, I started volunteering in the community. In around 2008, I started a reading program at Connors Park. And Connors Park is over on Orchard Street over in Southside. And that was just because one day I met a little kid outside of my house who was coming up from the store and said he can't read. And it kind of struck me because kids usually say, "I don't know how to read. I haven't learned to read." But this kid really was like, "I can't read." So, I thought, well, in the summer, kids need something that seems like it's fun, but they're learning. So, I decided to figure out a way to get a program at the park. So, I partnered with the woman that runs the free lunch program there. And I would just come in on Wednesdays. It's five minutes already?
You can have another minute to wrap up your thoughts.
So, I did that. And then, in addition to all the rest of my community volunteer, I'm a volunteer with Elm Street Project in Southside, which is now the Southside Revitalization. I'm on the Image and Identity Committee. So, we've been building the image of Southside. And that's about eight years, seven years of doing that. I participated in the Blight to Bright training the county offered. I sat on the board, or the awards board, I'm not really sure what it was, for the Beautiful Blocks Grant. I was able to vote on who got what awards for that. And what else do I do? And I just volunteer over in Southside. Oh, and I'm part, I'm the vice president of the Neighborhood Association. And that really is what kind of facilitated me getting my interest in doing community work and helping out the neighbors. So, really, to sum it up, I'm here because I like to champion Scranton. And lately, that's been a little bit difficult because we're facing several challenges in the city. And we really need to reinforce with our neighbors, who are the real stakeholders in this city, that they do truly have a stake in this city. I would like to be part of a team that makes sound decisions for our neighbors. And I think my experience volunteering, my experience in employment, really has me a good solid resume for this kind of position. So, I figured I better put my name in because if I can't put my name in, I can't expect someone else to do it for me. So, that's really why I'm here today.
Thank you. Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes. Mrs. Madsen, thank you for your letter of interest. Taking ownership in the city, that really does mean a lot to us. Sorry, the mic was off there. Thank you, Mrs. Madsen, for your letter of interest and your dedication and your love for the city. That means a lot to us. How will you use your skills that you learned in the private sector on your seat as a councilwoman?
In my private sector, I have learned to be organized. I have learned to be task-oriented. So, I also have learned that I don't always know the answer to questions. So, I am not opposed to saying, "I don't know the answer to this question. Let me go and find someone who does know the answer." So, I think I can be a very good listener to the folks of our city and to the problems of our city and try to figure out a way to get a successful answer to the issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Yes, thank you for your interest. How would you define the governmental function of city council? In other words, what is the purpose for having a city council?
I did read the charter for what the council does. And basically, you're the legislative branch. So, we can kind of align that with the Congress that we know, the House of Representatives, and the Senate on the federal level. And you need to work, I believe, the mayor and you folks have the same equal power. So, you kind of have to work together to get the best focus and answer for what needs to be done within the city.
Okay, thank you. In your opinion, what is the biggest challenge facing city government? And what could you bring to council to help us address that challenge?
Right now, I think the biggest challenge is that we kind of don't have support from the citizens in the city. When I told folks that I was doing this, a lot of them were like, "Good luck. This is great." And then the other side of the coin was, "Why?" So, it's hard. We have challenges. They're not going to upend the ship. We just need to right the ship back on its course. So, I think transparency and automation are really the two things you have to pay attention to. It would be wonderful if someone could come in the door and they sign in and they have their list of what needs to be done. So, they go to Department A, Department B, and Department C. And they can follow, each department could follow where they were and what they did and what kind of extras still need to be done. That would be a really good thing to be able to do for the city.
Thank you. Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Sure, thank you. What specific ideas do you have that would improve city operations?
Specifically, I would like to see the departments automate it. I would like to be able to bring in our brain trust that surrounds students from the university, students from Marywood, students from Lackawanna, students from Johnson Tech, to be able to come in and figure out a way to automate us and bring us not only into the 21st century, but maybe the 22nd, and get ahead of the game. So, that way, we can build support from our outside folks looking in and get some ownership into this city. Show our citizens that are here that we're working towards making everything clear and simple and a plan that you know how to jump into and really get it right, like, the right path. Because it seems like, from the complaints I hear from folks, is everybody has to go in 16 different directions to try and find one answer. And that's really been confusing and somewhat difficult for some folks.
Thank you very much. This will conclude our interview. We have two more candidates and then we're going to break and we're going to hope to make a decision today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Before you begin, one question to start off saying this last time. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
Yes, I am. A proud resident.
The floor is yours.
Okay. You might remember me. I was here a few weeks ago in a Mays position. I mean, you picked the second-best man. I was the best man, but I can live with that. You know, Evans deserves all the credit and all the luck. I want to do something for the city of Scranton. I've been reading up on what's happened to Scranton. It seems like it's a cookie jar that people just put their hand in and take stuff out. And that's depressing. One thing I can say, I can only speak for myself, is I have the city's good intentions at heart. And one of the reasons is I have three properties myself in Scranton. So, if you steal from Scranton, you're stealing from me. I don't like that. I want to see Scranton fulfill its promise. It's a beautiful city. Like I've told you before, I lived outside of Pittsburgh. I lived outside New York City. I lived in New York City. This city is clean. I mean, the streets, it's impressive. The building's impressive. I've told you before, this building's impressive. I have the highest regard for people like yourself because I know you're not doing this for the money. That's for sure. You're doing it probably for the same reason I am. I'm going to do it. I'm going to help the people. And just to sit back and complain helps nobody. If I could help, if I could work, I could work with anybody. And if I don't have the best idea, I'll listen to the best idea. And I'm open to anything that makes the city better, makes it better for the people. People, everything I read about Scranton residents is they could put up an incompetency, maybe, but they can't put up a dishonesty. And this other mayor, I get angry. I get angry. I would drive him myself to the city jail and throw away the key if I could. But I don't have that option. If you give it to me, I'll do it though, free of charge. I really want to help the city. And if you got, I have some ideas, you know? I explained to you before. And maybe they're good, maybe they're not so good. But I'll listen to you. I'll work with anybody. I've been at a shop steward before. I've owned businesses before. I have a million-dollar businesses. I've been around. And one thing I can tell you is, nobody, nobody could have asked me for a favor expecting me to give it to them if I'm a city councilman. I don't work like that. Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Perry, do you have any questions?
Yes, well, welcome back. It's good to see you again. And thank you again for the letter of interest. A question a little bit different than the last time you were here. How will the skills you've learned in the private sector, how will you apply them to your job as councilman?
No, it gets simple. It's not just in the private sector. I'm at an age now where I want to, I want to, I've done all I wanted to do as a worker. Now, I want to see things get better for me and for people. I want to help people. Like I said, I've been a shop steward. I've been a manager. I've been on both sides. And I'm open to anything. I can work with people. I could take advice. I could take criticism. I could take rejection. I could take success. And I want to succeed. I want to see this city. I moved there two and a half years ago. I've got three properties. I'm looking for fourth. That's how much I believe in this city. And once Scranton gets better, for me, it gets better for everybody. That's my main objective, to make it, to make it what it used to be. There was 150,000 people in here in 1940. Now, there's half of that. Why?
Mr. Donahue, any questions?
Thank you.
In your opinion, what is the biggest challenge facing city government? And what could you bring to council to help us address that challenge?
All right, well, besides the, I guess, the fiscal restraints. I mean, it's tough for the city. I've been reading the papers, I've been reading articles, look at the news. Even this building, I mean, it has been renovated. And I read, it's $11 million, is what I read, to renovate the building. And I'm wondering, who's the contractor? Michelangelo? $11 million? And you want to sell it? You want to keep it? There's a lot of problems facing this city fiscally. And you can't keep digging into people's pockets and grab it all at once. But you can reach in and take a little bit at a time, just a little bit, to get by. That's all I say is, maybe a little payroll tax for the people that work here. That's the biggest problem I see, is the fiscal restraints.
Thank you. Mr. Gawn, any questions?
Yes, thank you. What specific ideas do you have that would improve city operations?
To improve city operations? Well, the first thing I would do, I'll put street signs on the street corners. You drive by, I can't even read the streets. Either the signs aren't there or they're missing. I would have more, maybe more volunteer work for the kids, for the schools, get them involved. Maybe reach out to seniors in nursing homes, make them understand that they're not forgotten. There were people that were productive at one time, not in the twilight of their life. And it's hard for them. People want to feel needed. People want to feel like you're listening to them. That's what I see. You have to make people believe that you have their interest at heart. Other things for the city? Well, maybe make Neyard Park maybe more user-friendly. Or maybe have more open days at the museum for people. Maybe make the police maybe walk on patrol a little bit, talk to the people. That's nice. You know, when the police, they know who the people are, they talk to them. You never know. These are some of the things I might do.
Thank you very much. This will conclude our interview. We have one more interview and we're going to hope to make a decision today.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Before you begin, one quick question, same question we had last time. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
Yes, I've been a resident here for 10 years. I own a home.
And the floor is yours.
Yes, I see this opportunity for a council position to open up. Of course, in my later years, I can't jump in the military anymore. They retired me from there. And I see that you could probably use somebody. I've been around the world. I've been in a few situations around the world. I know people. I like the city. And I think I could work well. I'm not out to cut anybody down or make, you know, I'm out to work with people. I mean, I know we have a president that was an actor that became a president, you know? We have another president that wasn't a politician. He became a president. So, I'm not into politics. But I think, whatever it's thrown at me, I think I could take the bat at it and try to do something. I have a granddaughter who lives in the city, a son. And I'd like to make things better for them and the rest of the people in this city. Other than that, you could hit me, whatever you need to hit me for.
Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes, well, welcome back. It's good to see you again. And again, thank you for your service.
Right.
So, how do you think the skills that you learned in the private sector, how are they going to be a
and it's hard for them. People want to feel needed. People want to feel like you're listening to them. That's what I see. You have to make people believe that you have their interest at heart. Other things for the city? Well, maybe make Neyard Park maybe more user-friendly, or maybe have more open, open days at the museum for people. Maybe make the peo, make the police maybe walk on patrol a little bit, talk to the people. That's nice, you know when the police are, they know who the, who the people are, they talk to them? You never know. These are some of the things I might do.
Thank you very much. This will conclude our interview. We have one more interview, and we're going to hope to make a decision today.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Before you begin, one, one quick question, same question we had last time. Are you a resident of the city of Scranton?
Yes, I've been a resident here for ten years. I want to home.
And the floor is yours.
Yes, I see this opportunity for, for a council position to open up. Of course, in my later years, I can't jump in the military anymore, they retired me from there. And I see that you could probably use somebody. I've been around the world. I've been in a few situations around the world, I know people. I like the city, and I think I could well, work, work well, I'm not out to cut anybody down or make, you know, I'm out to work with people. I mean, I know, we have a president that was an actor, became a president, you know. We have another president that wasn't a politician, he became president. So I'm not into politics, but I think, whatever is thrown at me, I think I could take the bat at it and try to do something. I have a granddaughter, lives in the city as a son, and I'd like to make things better for them and the rest of the people in this city. Other than that, you could hit me, whatever you need to hit me for.
Mr. Perry, any questions?
Yes, well, welcome back. It's good to see you again, and again, thank you for your service. So how, how do you think the skills that you learned in the private sector, how are they going to be applied to your council appointment?
Well, as each point, as each problem comes along, I probably try to get a hold of somebody that's been involved in that before. You know, I try to, you know, try to find things out on my own. I don't know a lot of things about things about stuff, but I can get things done, it seems like. As I said, I've been around, I've been in, I've dumped tanks in the ocean for the fishes. You know, I've been up in Alaska unloading an island, clearing it off. We had sixty days to unload an island. We had to get all the furniture off that base and on barges. I've been on Iraq, I've been in one of the busiest airports in the world. For six months, I was on that base. And, you know, under extreme heat and forty-five days without even a break, without even a day off or anything. So like I says, I've been in a lot of situations, and I think if I got something thrown at me, I could try to work with people and get something done.
Thank you.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes, thank you for your interest. In, in your opinion, what is the biggest challenge facing city government, and what could you bring to council to help us address that challenge?
Okay, one of the things I've noticed here, I've been to a couple of meetings, and I know, I've never been called back or told, you know, my neighbors have, you know, asked me to stop here, and I've, I've never been, been told, or, or, how can I say those in words? They've never come back and resolved the problem or said why or anything else. I'd like, as a councilman, if, if somebody has a problem, I'd like to at least give them an answer. I say, "I'm sorry, we didn't have the money," or "We're looking at this," or something. It just seems as though, a lot of people say, "We can't find anything out, there's a door here that isn't open." I'd like to see a lot more open communication with the city, with the people that live here.
Thank you. Mr. Gahn, any questions?
Thank you. What specific ideas do you have that might improve city operations?
Well, one thing I like to do is, I know, what I, I work for a Fortune 500 company, they're not paying big money. And I don't like to take anything away from people, but I think we really need to look at some of the wages that we're paying people. You know, and I think that when you're going to start hiring more people, you know, I think we've got to say, "Hey, this is what so-and-so makes, this is all we can afford to pay." We can't be looking at union demands today and expect the people that are retired, that are, you know, trying to pay for their homes, to pay people that are, you know, I think some of these salaries are way, way too high for the area. Another thing like with contracts, I mean, really should look at some of these contracts and see if there's somebody that, you know, shares some of the wealth, so to speak, look around, see what some of these people do and what they're willing to do, and, and get together and say, "Hey, look what this guy did, he did this extra, or this one, look what he did." You know, I, I'd like to see it cost-cutting as much as we can. I know, I've been, my position was eliminated because they sold their trucks, they found a different way to, to do things. I went back into the company for half the money because I need to pay for my home. And that's the way it is today. You know, people have to take the, take cuts sometimes, and that's what we need to do here. We've got to take cuts in the city to keep it going.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming in, we appreciate your interest. This will conclude our interview. We're actually, if a council member has a motion to recess, we're going to recess and discuss all the applicants and possibly come back out shortly for a vote.
I make a motion to recess so we can meet in executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Motion has been made to recess in order to meet in executive session. Is there a second?
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, we are in recess. Call this meeting back to order?
I make a motion to nominate a person to fill the position vacated by former Scranton City Councilman Wayne Evans to serve for the remainder of this year, with the said term scheduled to expire at twelve noon on January sixth, two thousand and twenty.
A motion has been made to fill the position vacated by former Councilman Wayne Evans. Is there a second?
Second.
This motion is to place the nomination on the agenda. On the question? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so will.
I make a motion to nominate Attorney Mary Walsh Dempsey to fill the unexpired term of former Scranton City Councilman Wayne Evans for the remainder of this year, with said term scheduled to expire at twelve noon on January sixth, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
On the question?
Yes, on the question, first of all, I just want to thank everyone who, who put their name in. This is actually, in, in my opinion, a difficult decision. We had, you know, talked back there for, for quite a while and went back between several candidates. All the people that showed up today and took their time out of their schedule, I think, should be commended. Your participation and your, your interest in public service is extremely valuable to this city, and I want to, again, thank you for that. So for those applicants who did not get the position, I, I don't think that you should be deterred. I think, you know, you should continue to, to participate, and I just really appreciate everyone putting their name in. I do want to congratulate Attorney Dempsey. I do think she will make a good councilwoman, and I think she'll be a part, part of a good team here to, to move the city forward. Thank you.
Anyone else?
On the question, yes, I also want to thank all the candidates. This was a very difficult decision. In some ways, I think we saw a little bit more passion and a little bit brought to the table, more so than we did with some of the candidates for the mayoral position. And this was very difficult. It did go back and forth, like Mr. Gahan said, and there were more than one person that I feel willing to step in and take this job on. But at this time, we need to make sure that we're doing what's best for council and what's best for the city, and that's how we got to our decision, and I want to congratulate Attorney Dempsey, and I wish her all the best of luck.
I would like to thank all the applicants for applying, my colleagues for, we all worked together again on a very upfront process. Everything went very smoothly. I will be voting against the nomination, not as a, voting against Attorney Dempsey. I think she's going to make a great addition to city council. But I did believe, based on how short-term the position was, that there was one candidate whose understanding of the issues far exceeded anyone else that was interviewed. That was Joan Horewanitz, who's a regular speaker at our meetings. I just think because of the short-term nature of the position, that it was critical to have somebody that knew all of these issues on day one. So that's who, who I was advocating for, and I think from watching the interviews, her knowledge of the issues was head and shoulders above anyone else that applied, and that's not a slight on anyone else. I do understand Attorney Dempsey does have at least, does have three votes, so we will welcome her to the board. And as, just to reiterate, my vote is not a vote against her, it is a vote in support of another candidate. Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gahn?
Yes.
Mr. Rogan?
No. The motion passes. Attorney Dempsey is going to be the new councilwoman. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned.